The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, which we are. Any person attending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary, the attorneys presenting the case to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding the case are requested to fill out an information form on the podium. So if you come to the podium, there's a form there that you just put your name and address and who you are if you want to speak during the meeting.
Yep.
The Chairman asks each Board Member to identify themselves, starting with John.
August.
Dave Nunnely.
Brian Sullivan.
Alexander Donahue.
Rachel Lor.
Now, on the agenda tonight, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the first case of 2024-06, David Crosby, at 41 Depot Street, and change the order so that we're going to hear first on case number 2024-07, Matthew Jennifer Davis, followed by 2024-08 for Katharina Zulig. I made the motion. Can someone second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Would the clerk call the first case, please?
Case number 2024-07, Matthew and Jennifer Davis, through their attorney, William Crowell, are the owners of the property located at 67 Ginger Plum Lane, Assessors Map, excuse me, 5 parcel G1-4 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative variance of 325-54, nonconforming structures, and uses 325 Attachment 2 Table 2, Area Regulation 325 Attachment 3. Height, Table 3, height, the bulk regulations to raise, replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, 325-54, MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
The notices that I'm aware of is the fact that health departments require a fully compliant subject system being installed, and the police department had no concerns, and I did not see any letters from the Butters. And I'd like to have the applicant representative induce themselves, and those assisting you in your sentencing case.
Thank you. Attorney William Crowell from Howardport, representing the petitioner this evening. If I may, I just wanted to introduce the gentleman seated beside me. His name is Attorney Michael Donovan, and he hasn't started yet, but he's going to be my new law partner, hopefully shortly, and he's very excited about seeing how the Board of Appeals works. He does know, however firsthand, because I handled his case two years ago during COVID, and he and his wife moved down to Howard, bought a house in Howard, and they decided that we have a pretty good lifestyle here as opposed to up around Boston. So he got in touch with me, and things have worked out very well. So I'm not retiring. I'm looking to hand off some of the workload and share it and keep appearing before you. But next month, as luck would have it, I've had to file one last week with Rachel, and I didn't look at my calendar, and we're going to be away that week. So if everything's in place, Mike will be handling that in my absence.
Does Mike realize he's responsible for keeping me educated regarding zoning code?
He is. He knows that you always like to ask questions to be educated.
Thank you.
So yes, I pointed that out.
Make sure that's clear now.
Okay. Yeah. So in this case, the petitioners, Matthew and Jennifer Davis, who could not be here this evening, are asking the Board for a special permit to demolish or replace the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling as shown on the existing conditions and proposed conditions plot plan by Moran Engineering dated January 2, 2024, and the undated building and elevation plans by Rickroy Construction Sheets A1, 2, and 3. In walking you through the setbacks, you'll see that what we're doing is taking an existing dwelling that is somewhat angled, cockeyed towards the northerly boundary and making it more certainly parallel to that northerly boundary, squaring it off. So, and it's got roads on either side, Ginger Plum Lane on the west and Montomoy Road on the east. So it will, I would suggest, fit that rectangle a lot better than the existing location because the northerly setback right now is only .6 feet. So what's that, seven inches from the lot line? And it's going, we're going to bring it back, and it's going to be 5.2 feet, both on the, on both corners of that proposed dwelling. So you're going to be improving by almost five feet off of that lot line. On the southerly side, the existing house is 18.7, and we're going to come a little bit closer at 14.2. But the 18.7, you know, 20 feet is required, so we're nonconforming, so we're intensifying that nonconformity somewhat, going to 14.2. And then there's a, as I read it, a ground level access steps to the basement. It would be, the edge of that ground level abutment would be 9.3 feet from that southerly line. The easterly setback, no problem, is, bear with me for one second. 37, the existing setback is, it's not showing directly on the plan, I don't think, but it's 43.6. It says easterly, it's westerly, and it will decrease somewhat down to 36.9. And then on the east side, Montomoy roadside, it is currently 13.9, and that will remain the same for the new dwelling as well. So we're staying the same on the east, we're improving on the north, we're going somewhat closer on the south, and we're still a good ways away from Ginger Plum Lane. We only have to be 25 feet, and we are over 36 feet. So we remain conforming there. The building coverage is 13.8%, the 30% max, and that will remain conforming at 26.2. The site coverage is currently 29% and with a 35% max, and we will end at 34.6 for site coverage on that. So building coverage and site coverage will remain conforming, but because we're squaring off the house and making it parallel to the northerly boundary, when you compare the footprint of the new house to the footprint of the old house on the proposed conditions plan, you can see that, for example, on the Montomoy roadside on the east, although we're staying 13.9 feet from Montomoy Road, we're having new corners of the new dwelling that is creating habitable space within the 20-foot setback. Similarly, with the northerly and southerly improvements, will create some pieces of habitable space now. But I would suggest it's a much better situation, both from a zoning standpoint and probably from an aesthetic standpoint, to have this squared off and parallel to the boundaries. And I would assume the northerly Butters would like that also. So by creating new habitable space within the northerly, easterly, and southerly boundaries, we're intensifying existing nonconformities. But as you know, with the Gale case, that's a special permit, not a variance, and we would contend that there would be no substantial resulting increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion, or the like. It would not be a nuisance, and there would be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. We've submitted the Assessors Map, so you can see the location. It's just southerly of Lower County Road off of Ginger Plum Lane. You have the two plot plans, the building and elevation plans, the so-called denial letter by the building commissioner, and we will comply with the Board of Health's request that it shows on our plans we're putting in a new septic, a two-bedroom septic system. So we'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening.
Got any questions and comments? And I just have, first of all, the, on Montomoy Road, are all the fences on the applicant's property? Just out of curiosity, and because I know that there's a fence on Montomoy, just was wondering if that was just on the, I'm assuming that fence there on Montomoy is on your property.
If it's not showing on the plan, I have no way of knowing
Okay, all right.
How to answer that.
So, education question.
And I'm assuming, Mr. Chairman, that the four of you are the designated voters on this?
Yeah, we get to that, remember that? We've changed the order of that now.
I understand. I thought now was the time.
No, it's after open session.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's not, per the attorney, they recommended I select, appoint the voters, assign the voters after open session is closed.
After you close the hearing? Okay.
Close the open session part, yeah.
That's a pretty safe assumption.
A safe assumption that we need four out of five tonight.
Four out of five.
Yeah. I'm just guessing that.
There's a concern regarding our approval whether tonight a straw vote is fine.
Thank you.
So here's the question. There's nothing to do with my concerns about approving this project, but the access steps to the basement.
Yes.
So showing a setback of 9.3 feet.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's going down into the ground. If there was a patio there, it wouldn't be an issue for a setback.
Correct.
If it was a shower stall or outside, whatever they call it now today, it wouldn't be an issue for a setback.
We just pretend those are invisible.
Why is it, why is the basement steps in the setback?
It's a good question.
Right.
All right. And the answer is, I've run into this before with swimming pools.
Okay.
The wall of the swimming pool, actually the apron, according to the building commissioner, the apron on the top of the, on the ground level, that's the edge of the setback. But the wall of the swimming pool is considered a structure because under our definition, any combination, in the bylaw, any combination of materials designed to give shelter or support, this is designed to give support. So technically, as you might say, it's considered to determine where the setback lies at 9.3. I don't like it because it's ground level, you know? But the setbacks are not only horizontal, but they're vertical, just like when you create a second-floor bedroom and you're already too close to the lot line, that second-floor vertically is still within the 20-foot vertical setback from the lot lines and the street lines.
Right.
So it goes down like when you finish off a basement. The building commissioner says, wait a minute, you want to create habitable space in your basement? And you're 10 feet from your lot line, you're supposed to be 20? You're creating habitable space
Right, right.
Down. So that, I think, is the argument as to why that wall is the setback.
Okay. Would the same apply to a bulkhead there? Okay, I'm thinking, I've seen bulkheads.
Bulkheads reduce, under our bylaw, they reduce the setback by 50%.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
As I think chimneys do as well.
Yeah. All right. What's your expected timeframe for the project?
Rickroy Construction is in charge of the project, so I don't know whether they intend to start the project before the summer, but they did, and you put in your usual, no substantial demolition or landscaping after June 30th and before Labor Day.
I do think we'll have that in this.
And then they could at least take the house down.
Right, okay.
And get maybe a weather tight frame up.
And looking at the site, they should be able to maintain their vehicles on the property?
I would say so.
Okay.
You got streets on both sides.
And were any of these plans shared with the Butters? I know they, they're all got notices.
I don't know.
Okay.
But they all, they all got notified by Rachel.
John.
No, I don't have any questions. I normally take my run down Lower County, so I took a little jog this morning.
Run, run, okay.
It's, will be very much in line with the rest of the neighborhood. I have no concerns.
No questions.
Just a comment, the back of the property up against the fence on the northerly side, if that's five feet, it's surprising because it's so tight going through there.
It's not five feet yet.
It will be five feet.
It will be 5.2 feet, yes.
Because right now, it's about three feet tall.
Yeah, it's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, no further It's how much?
No further questions. No, I have no further questions.
Okay, that, I'd like to make the session to the public. Is anyone here that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay. Hearing none? I'd like to make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Approved. Okay, well, voting on the case tonight would be Al Donahue, myself, Brian Sullivan, Dave Nunnely, and John August. And I'd like to entertain any further discussion by the Board?
None for me.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I'd like a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion is closed.
It's approved.
I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion in this case.
Case number 2024-07, Matthew and Jennifer Davis, through their attorney, William Crowell, have been, they own the property at 67 Ginger Plum Lane, have been
Assessors map.
Assessors map, M5 parcel G1-4 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 325-54, nonconforming structures and the uses, and the use of 325 Attachment 2 Table 2, Area Regulation 325 Attachment 3, Table 3, height and bulk regulations to raise and replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family home pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, 325-54 and MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The granting of the special permit further consists of, consistent with the Dale case, related cases, as will be, an intensification of one or more existing nonconformities, and no new nonconformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot, and as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, or congestion. Any relief not expressed, granted here on 2, is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application mother said grant and approve subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. That for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street. Violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
John? John's making a second. Actually, I should have asked first, any further discussion? None? Okay. And you know, you're making a motion again, please? Okay. And vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 4 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like the clerk to call the next case, please.
Case number 2024-08, Catherine Zulig, through her attorney, William Crowell. They offer the prop, owner of the property located at 708 Main Street, Assessors Map, 41 parcel B5 in the CV in Howard Center overlay zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or an alternative variance of 325-54, nonconforming structures, and uses 325 Attachment 2 Table 2, Area Regulation to locate, relocate the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on the same lot constructed in addition with the attached deck and detached the existing shed from the rear of the dwelling, relocate on the same lot pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw, 325-54, MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
Regarding relevant notices by the other departments, the health department comments included the following: The office must be less than 70 square feet or not be considered a bedroom. The playroom in the basement requires pass-through to access the mechanical room and shall not be used for sleeping, and a licensed septic installer must apply for the permit to relocate the tank. Police department had no other concerns, no other concerns from other departments, and I'm not aware of any letters from the Butters. So the Chairman asks the applicant representative to induce themselves and the persons assisting you in presenting this application.
Thank you. Attorney William Crowell from Howardport, representing Katharina Zulig. This evening, she is the owner of the property in question at 708 Main Street, and she's seated right here beside me. Now, I know the Board likes to hear a little bit about town history, so this build, this house is right down the street here, and it's right next to what used to be the Exchange Hall block, the Exchange block. And there's that little park there with the statue of the Exchange Hall, and that's the footprint. That's where the Exchange Hall was, just on that park area. But the buildings next to it, where the art shop is and a clothing shop that come next to Zulig's house, were all part of the Exchange Hall block. And as a boy, we used to, my sister and I used to walk up to the Exchange Hall on summer evenings, get some candy at Toby's Market on the first floor, and then the second floor was an auditorium, and that was where the Howard Junior Theater started, and we would watch plays by Howard Junior Theater. That's where a town meeting was held in that auditorium. And then the third floor was, in the old days, that was a roller skating rink.
Really?
Really. And it was built, that building was built back in the 1800s, you know, Chase and Sanborn Coffee. That was built by Mr. Chase of Chase and Sanborn. He was a big deal, big wheel in West Howard, Chase Library, all right? So he built the first Exchange Hall, which was the tallest building on Cape Cod at the time, in the late 1800s, and then it burned down. So they rebuilt it with steel girders and so forth, and it was, again, the tallest building on Cape Cod. And my grandmother, Gladys Grayson, and a few other ladies during World War II were assigned, all of the housewives took turns going into the turret of the Exchange Hall during World War II to watch out, look out for German U-boats in Antucket Sound and Cape Cod Bay during, it was that tall. So it's kind of cool. Next door to this is the Zulig's house, which was, when I was growing up, that was the McGillan House, James McGillan family, for many, many years, like 40 years or more. And then they died, and the house fell into some disrepair, and it went through a couple of owners to get to Ms. Zulig. So it's a long-winded way of saying she wants to improve this property and improve the streetscape of Howard Center and the revitalization of Howard Center that is taking place, you know, building by building, and this will be another piece to that. So we've been to the Historic Commission a little less than two years ago, because it's not only 1850 house, but it's in the Howard Center Historic District, so you had to double approval with them. And in the old days, they liked to have all, everything was right on the street. And that way, if you had a horse and buggy, you didn't have, and it snowed, you didn't have to go so far to get to the streets. Everybody's on the street. So in any event, Ms. Zulig doesn't want to be that close to the street. She's just got a car. She doesn't need a horse and buggy. So she wants to push it back from where it is now, which is 16.8 feet, to 30 feet. It has the permission of the Historic Commission to do that. So she's not demolishing and replacing, she's respecting the building, the existing dwelling. She's going to be renovating it, part of it, and then you'll see on the existing conditions plan where she's removing a portion of the dwelling in the rear that's got crosshatched, that's being removed entirely, and she's putting an addition on the back there and a deck that shows on the other side of the plan for the proposed dwelling, and then a patio back there. And then there's this shed that's currently attached to the house, so she's getting rid of the crosshatch section, putting on an addition, and taking a portion of the shed and putting it to the rear of the property that shows on the proposed conditions plan, and it's conveniently 99 square feet. So if it's under 100 square feet, the bylaw says that it can be five feet from the lot line, and so that's what she's proposing to do, utilize as much of the existing house as possible. And we've been through historic down to, we have to put brick veneer around the basement so you don't see the concrete blocks, and we have to do certain things with the chimney and all of that. and all of that. So they're happy with all of that. So as far as the zoning issues are concerned, we're asking to relocate and modify the existing house as outlined by constructing an addition with an attached deck and the shed to the rear as shown on the plan by TS Land Surveying dated February 13, 2024, for the existing and proposed conditions, and then the building and elevation plans submitted with the petition. We will address the Board of Health issues that they brought up when we apply for the septic permit, so that will be addressed. If we do anything internally to the so-called office versus bedroom, that would just be all internal, it would not affect the footprint that you're hopefully approving tonight.
I understand.
So we will be more than 25 feet from the road, which makes us, from Main Street, which makes us conforming at that point. So we're non-conforming right now, we will become conforming at 30 feet, maybe a hair less, 29.7 on one corner, but still more than 25 feet. We're going to remain the same distance on the easterly side. We're presently 5.8, and even though we're going back, you see that easterly line angles easterly somewhat. So the house will remain at 5.8 feet, and it's because of that angle. So that will remain, that setback will remain the same, and we're pretty good on the northerly setback, 101.5 feet, I don't think there's any quarrel there. On the westerly side, we are presently 26.8, says 26.6, but that's because I didn't use my magnifying glass. 26.8, and it will remain conforming at 27.6. So we're good on that side, we're good on the westerly side, we're okay on the north, we're conforming now on the southerly side, and we're not coming any closer on the easterly side, we're maintaining that 5.8 distance. And I love the building coverage max, maximums and site coverage, because in this zone, the maximum building coverage is 50% of the lot, and the maximum site coverage is 80%. So our building coverage is presently 10 and 1/2%, and we're going down a little bit to 10.1, and the site coverage is 17.8, and we are going only to 34.2, so much less than the 80%. And as I said, the shed will comply, it'll be less than 100 square feet, and it'll be more than five feet from the lot line and under the height requirement. So as far as the Gale case is concerned, and we submitted the denial letter as well from the Building Commissioner, but as far as the Gale case is concerned, we're taking a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence, and we are creating new habitable space within the 20-foot setback on the easterly side because we're moving the whole house back. So we're not coming any closer, but we're creating habitable space northerly, further northerly than it presently exists. So we need a special permit to do so, and our contention is that the resulting relocation and renovation of the building would not constitute a substantial increase in, or result in a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like, would not create a nuisance, and it would be, it would not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. You would argue it would be a great enhancement to the neighborhood. We ask you to grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John, any questions?
Not really. I think we've probably laid it out pretty well. I am a little worried, though, that the applicant's father stayed at our inn when he visited last time, and may not want to stay anymore once the renovation is done. Besides that, I'm...
So you're not going to recuse yourself all of a sudden?
No.
I don't think it rises to...
I don't think it's that big of a conflict.
Right.
No, no questions. I was actually kind of surprised when I looked this up, I mean, on that zoning district, in that downtown section, that the setback was so far required by that, by the zone. You know, if someone was going to turn this into more a commercial lot, having that large of a setback, I mean, the requirement of a 25-foot setback in that section of town, I was surprised that that was, that's required, you know?
Yes, because you'd want it closer to be like all the other buildings, you'd think.
Right, yeah, exactly. And it's a downtown, it's a commercial section, I'm just kind of surprised that the zoning requires, of course, this situation here would have a pre-existing nonconformity, but other than that, I would think in a commercial district, you wouldn't have such a wide setback.
I would agree with you, just looking one thing up. Because it's in the overlay district, if this was a new project, right, then I believe the overlay, when it talks about dimensional requirements, says the front setback requirement shall be determined at the time of site plan review based on existing development patterns and the elements of the proposed project. So I think that leaves the planning boards some latitude, if this was a new project, to maybe say, okay, you can be 10 feet from the street.
Okay.
Just, but here, we need to be at the Board of Appeals because...
I realize that, I was just, again, just to...
But I would agree with you, that it's kind of inconsistent with the street shape concept.
What's the construction timeframe? I know you got to raise a building up, you've got to build a new foundation.
As soon as possible.
Uh-huh.
When do they want to start?
Well, now we, it depends, like, as soon as possible to have some paperwork done.
The owner would like the builder to start as soon as possible.
Sure.
I'm assuming on Main Street that you probably would impose that condition about June 30th and Labor Day?
Again, I'm not, possibly, and I want to discuss that with the board, because you've got a lot of room back there, too.
A lot of room.
You know, first of all, whether it's, you know, July or it's February, typically, there's not much parking available in that street to begin with. So it doesn't, you have, you have the same impact in July in that street as you would have in February. And, I don't know, I'm thinking the fact if, if everything's being maintained on the lot, just like the period of time they spent redoing the foundation on the Brooks Building, that went on for a period of time. Now, and...
I'm assuming, once they raise this building up and they start working on it, it's not
like you're going to have big dump trucks to sit in the front of the building or in the street. If you had other vehicles, I'm assuming you're going to be able to park it on the lot. So I'm not...
It'd be great.
I don't...
The only concern that I would have, I agree with you most of the time, but this is also the cultural arts district now, and I think having construction activities when one of those events are going on in the summer could be difficult, with trucks are going to have to come in and out. So again, I don't think a total ban, but I think there's got to be some understanding that there's going to be events, I just want something coming up here in May, right, that, you know, the chamber is going to do another, similar to the Dickens...
And that's normally an evening, that's normally a weekend or an evening situation.
But, you know, I just think there needs to be some sort of a caveat that says they're going to work around the schedule of tourist-oriented activities, let's put it that way, kind of in the summertime.
But now it's to fill till the summer.
That's what we're talking about.
Exactly.
Right. A lot of those activities are evening activities and weekend activities, correct? Well, I mean, sometimes, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Not quite how to word that motion as far as that, but I...
A suggestion?
Yes, go ahead.
During working hours, on weekdays, other than that, they wouldn't be there anyway.
Yeah, I do think that's, most of those events are, I think, I think, I would like to probably word the fact that it was John's, and because we haven't heard from Al yet, but the fact that there, we don't, if we don't put the restriction in for the time-wise, that construction be limited to, you know, during, during, during June and through Labor Day, you know, construction be limited to Monday through Fridays, daytime hours, and we request the applicant to consider special, special daytime activities, you know, in the town of Howard, and perhaps postpone construction during them, that would be the intent.
So it's not a moratorium, that you're allowed to, you still could construct, just don't get in the way if they got something going on.
And I'm assuming, particularly when there's more activity in town, there's going to be proper fencing to keep curious people away from what's going to be a big hole in the ground and a raised foundation.
That is agreeable, weekdays, during daylight hours, yes, but special consideration if there's some civic event going on.
Right, if there's a special town, you know, activity that, you know, they can also, you know, I know you probably track it or notify, get notified about that, okay? Al, what do you, what do you think?
My question would be, the back portion of that property, that backs up to where? And I should have...
The lodge.
The lodge.
So she doesn't have carte blanche to just go in from the rear of the lot? She'd have to have the permission of the lodge to cross over their property to get to her property, and rather not have to do that.
Mr. Eldredge would not be...
I can't answer for Mr. Eldredge.
Oh, we can.
But you'd be able to drive down there, can't you? Isn't it open up to, you get trucks down the, that...
On the, on the west side, that whole driveway there, yes.
Yeah, okay, then you'd be able to park back there.
Yes, you have that T in the back where they could park.
How many difficulties it's going to be, and we all know it, that gets busy in the summertime. But the restaurant across the street, and the seal, and all the other businesses, it's a nightmare under the best conditions. So if we can get the equipment off of the street earlier in the day, because nobody's going to make a left-hand turn coming out of these properties anyway.
We'll give as much consideration to not causing congestion and a problem as possible. Thank you.
We'll work in that condition before we get done here, but, okay. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak regarding this application? Okay, if there's no one else, any final comments from the applicant?
No, thank you.
Hearing, I'd like to have here an ask for motion to close public hearing. First would be Dave, okay, motion by Dave. Do I have a second? Al? Okay, all those in favor of closing, open session?
Aye.
All right.
Case number 20...
Let's get down to the voting first.
Okay.
I realize it's kind of automatic, and a couple other things we need to do. So we'll shake things up, work from the, for this case would be John August, David Nunnally, myself, and Al Donio. Any further discussion by the board?
None.
Okay. So let's, I'd like to hear, before we hear the motion, let's just kind of wrap up how we're going to verbalize word the...
I don't think we can verbalize it, to be very honest with you, because of the, because of where that is located, it's going to be difficult no matter what. But if there's, if there is a problem that arises, I'm sure that the local law enforcement would be interested in just moving things along, so...
Too bad, they used, in the old days, have a policeman right there all summer at the intersection of 124 and Main Street, and the guy would be, that person would be right there. They could control things a little bit better, but they don't have that anymore. But we don't have a problem with daylight hours on weekdays.
Okay. Let me just do something here.
You could say with due consideration to civic events.
I think the challenge is going to be during the excavation of the new foundation and the pouring of the new foundation. That's, because you're going to have a lot of trucks entering and leaving during that timeframe. Once it gets past that stage, you know...
I don't know where they're going to pile the dirt, they may have to cut it out, but probably pile it out back, there's plenty of room out back, you've got excavators, and then you've got cement mixers coming in. It's going to be interesting to look at...
That was really my point, was less the traffic and more, like you said, if, if by chance, I think there might be only two or three days during the summer, but if there was an event planned, just the noise, you know, on Main Street while they're trying to promote the barbecue competition or some other thing that's going on in town...
Watch the schedule.
...be sensitive to those types of days, you know? Which the builder probably does not want to be trying to get their traffic in and out of there on a day like that anyway.
The builder will be, well, the builder will be starting fairly early in the morning, I would suspect. I'm going to guess 6:30.
Not with heavy machinery, unless they want complaints from the neighbors.
Right, right.
I mean, I mean, getting the machinery into the lot, at least for one or two, one
I think the construction across the street at the cigar shop and the other place proceeded through the summer last year.
Yeah. So let's try this on for size. During the life of the project, there should be no site work between June 30th and Labor Day, other than Monday through Friday after 5:00 p.m. So no site work after Monday, Monday through Friday at 5:00 p.m. The applicant will suspend site work during special Howard's events.
Sounds right. Yes, thank you.
All right, so that's just, that's just, I mean, the motion is done, is that, everyone agree with that motion? Okay, well, okay, so, I can read that part when you get to it, I mean, Al. So, I'd like to have the clerk now read, make a motion on this case.
Okay. Case number 2024-08, Katrina, I think I mispronounced your name the first time I did it.
You Americanized it.
I did, didn't I?
Katerina.
Deutsche?
Sprechen Sie Deutsch? Nein, ich bin.
Your attorney, William Crowe, Esquire. She's the owner of the property located at 708 Main Street, assesses map 41 parcel B5 in the CV in Howard Center Overlay Zoning District. The applicant has been granted a special permit through 325-54 non-conforming structures and uses, and 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation to relocate pre-existing non-conforming single-family... and 325 Attachment 2 Table 2 Area Regulation to relocate pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on the same lot, construction addition with the attached deck, and detach the existing shed from the rear of the dwelling and relocate on the same lot pursuant to Howard zoning bylaw 325-54, chapter 48, section 6. Granting is consistent with the Diedrich and related cases as a maybe intensification of one or more existing non-conformities and no new non-conformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. As proposed, structure will be, will not create an additional negative impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. The relief not expressly granted under, hereby denied. All work shall be performed Monday through, well, it's going to be in accordance with the plan submitted with the applicant to include during the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30th, Labor Day of any year. However, Monday through Friday, the petitioner has access to the property. No work will be completed after 5:00 p.m. at night. What else do you have in there?
The applicant will suspend site work during special Howard events.
So that's to be during that period of time, in the summer months.
Right.
I can send you a copy of the conditions before you file it.
All right. A violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL, general law, chapter 48, section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Just wanted to add, I don't know if you covered it, Al, that life of project, all construction vehicles be parked on the property, on this property. Not on any public streets.
Thought we beat them to death.
Do we have a second on the motion? Okay, Dave? Any further discussion? Should have asked it first, okay. All right, vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, four to none. Okay, thank you.
I, I'm old, but not that old, I wasn't around when they were, it was roller skating. Why on the third floor, I don't know, but that's, that was the case, my folks told me about it.
That's where they were, believe it or not, in many places within this state, third floor of the hall, roller skating.
Was it for noise, or? It would seem to me it would just accentuate it.
I'm not sure the reason why, but I know of a city in which that was the case. And the downtown, the lower area, it was also used as a, an area for holding concerts and so forth and so on. The downstairs was actually used for commercial purposes as well as offices. But the upstairs was a roller rink.
Roller skating, well, maybe they figured they were...
We have no explanation to why it was, but it's what it was.
There's, there were no elevators, so maybe they feel they were...
Were the good exercise.
Had the legs to get up there and, up and down. Thank you for all your time tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mostly younger people, and they didn't want the older people to come upstairs to see what they were doing.
Probably very strong.
Always the case.
Okay. I want to hear the next case, but if I could just take a three-minute break, I'll be right back, appreciate it.
Are you babysitting tonight?
Is 481 next?
Yeah.
Please be seated.
Thank you. I'm okay.
Thanks for joining.
That's okay, it actually worked out, I was at a meeting, a four o'clock meeting in Carver.
Oh.
So, it wasn't too bad.
All one with a state.
Hi, I'm Amy.
David.
David, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, I'm all over the place.
Hey, how you doing?
It's good.
Hi, Brian.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Hey, before you start, a curiosity, whatever happened with the, the Gulf Coast situation, they, they, they...
I have no idea, I haven't heard a thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I would assume so. No news is good news with me.
We're back, and Al, if you could...
Case number 2024-06, David Crosby, your attorney, Bendman, Zeta?
Just ignore the H, it's Zander.
Oh, okay, Xander, I should know. 62 Route 6A, Suite B, Orleans. The property is located at 481 Depot Street, assesses map 36 parcel B1 in an IL and RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit, or an alternative, a use variance for 325 Attachment 1 Table 1 Use Regulation, convert a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling into a multifamily dwelling. A special permit, or in the alternative, a use variance from the building from 325 Table 1, 325 1 Table 1 Use Regulation to construct a self-storage building. A special permit, or an alternative, a use variance for 325 Attachment 1 Table 1 Use Regulation to create a mixed-use development. The applicant also seeks a special permit, or an alternative, a dimensional variance from 325 Attachment 3 Table 3 Height and Bulk Regulation to increase pre-existing non-conforming site coverage in the RR zoning district portion of the property pursuant to Howard zoning bylaw 325-52 and 54 in MGL chapter 40A, section 6 and 10. This case is a continued case from February 28.
Chief, I'd like to make a motion that we, this case was, I believe I closed the public hearing of the last case. So I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the meeting, session?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Dave?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor of opening up into open session?
Aye.
All right. So now we're back, and I want to thank you both for the courtesy of having us hear the first two cases.
No problem.
All right, I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
No, thank you for asking.
It's, just wanted to give us ample time, and I had people waiting, and I just thought it was best for all of us, but particularly for the first two cases, and so I appreciate the courtesy. One more trip and you get the honorary members of the board, I just want you to know.
Like a bunch of cards or something.
We can certainly discuss that at the end of the meeting.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I may, given that there are four members here tonight, and I'm, I'm not even familiar with whether you have the Mullen Rule, I would, I would rather not get into a substantive discussion about the project because we're going to be requesting two things of the board tonight. One is that you vote to continue the matter to your April 24th meeting, and I'll get into the reason for that in one minute. And the second is that, similar to your vote at your last meeting, you vote to allow us to amend our application to request an additional dimensional variance to exceed the building coverage in the RR portion of the lot. And, and by way of very brief explanation, it, it has come to our attention since the last meeting that the zoning district line in this area that is published by the town on the maps that are out there is not consistent with the 1972 map, and that it was identified to, I believe, the town surveying department, that they were different. So we were asked by the, by staff to submit a revised plan with the corrected zoning line, district line, which changes the way that that line runs through the property, which changes the calculations in that, and in looking at that box of calculations, it creates an additional non-conformity. So, you know, I'm, I'm really here just to request those two things of the board, one to allow us to amend and the others to continue the matter.
Okay. I appreciate both those requests, and certainly it'll be discussed by the board here, not just by myself. However, I would, I think in only fairness, before you leave tonight, I, I do prefer you get the temperature of the board regarding approving a new non-conformity.
Understood.
Because it, and I'd like to discuss that because it isn't something we typically, actually, I don't recall us, except, except when it had to do with rap, shape, and size, but I generally, in either of the approvals for both variances and special permits, have been when someone is looking to, you know, extend a non-conformity, okay? And you're, based upon the new, the new zoning situation, and, you know, the zoning line is on your plans, you are, for building coverage, 2.3 percent, whatever, you know, number, and it's, it's a minor number, but it is a new, a new non-conformity.
It is.
And I'd just rather have a discussion so that, rather than to have that take place when you come back, because, you know, I, I've spent a lot of time down at that site, and I've made, you know, at some point, I've been down there with a cup of, a cup of tea, whatever, just looking around and going through it, and, and I personally, my personal opinion is, the project at hand for both the house being expanded to multi, you know, multifamily as well as the storage, I think it meets very nicely with the area, so I, it, I... But, for, you know, I want to have a discussion regarding, and with the town attorney here, what are our options regarding creating, approving a, a new non-conformity
Understood.
when, when typically that has not been what the board has done. So, I'd rather have that discussion here tonight, so when you come back at the next meeting, all the plans really, you've taken consideration the discussion from the board.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and, and, and I was torn as I sat in the audience, as to whether to just request the continuance or whether to request the feedback, I just, you know, you don't have a full board tonight, you know, I, any feedback that I can get, I would love to have, and, and if the chair wants, I'm happy to make a presentation off of it.
Right, particularly with the, here, you know, Joiner's time is, is the town council.
Right.
And I'd just rather, you know, while she's here tonight, you know, get her input, what our options might be.
Okay.
Okay? Now, the...
If I may, just quickly, he's asking for a continuance for a very valid reason.
Yes, I agree with that.
Which is that he only has four members here tonight, so I can address, rather than, rather than subjecting this hearing to the Mullen Rule, I, I am available on the 24th, but I can tell you in general, if he's asking for a new non-conformity, then he's, it's a, it's a variance, it's not the, it's not an extension of a non-conformity, it's a new non-conformity.
It is.
So it's a variance, so he simply just has to come back meeting the variance standard.
I, I realize that, and I'm not quite sure, I want to discuss to you what the variance standard is.
Well, the variance standard is soil-shaped topography.
Right.
Hardship, and in, you know, in compliance with the general theme or the general, you know, purpose of the zoning bylaw.
So, I, I looked at it, he has two options, be able to prove to a full board, now, we're going to have to, I don't know what our situation can be where we, to avoid the Mullen situation, that's actually just turn this into a holding case again. So now whoever shows up at the next board meeting, you've got not...
And he has to re-advertise, and...
I mean, I just, I, I just...
Probably doesn't have time.
I just thrown that out, okay, okay, you're right, so we don't want to do that. We'll have to have one of the board members and make sure that they follow Mullen, but the actually, the only board member qualified for that for the next meeting would be actually Chris, no, it can and Chris, they were both here at the last meeting, I recall, let me just double check that.
I thought this was re-advertised.
For tonight?
It is.
It was. If it's re-advertised for tonight, it starts anew. So you don't have to worry about who was here before.
Okay.
And I believe it's going to be re-advertised for the next meeting as well, so I'm not, maybe we don't have a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, all right.
Because I was going to say, if, again, if you're re-advertising solely for relief, again, you can use the DuToe case where if the relief was expected, then it's fine, but that's up to you.
Yeah, I, I, and given what your counsel's saying, I feel more comfortable, you know, since, you know, one of the requests that we're making is not only that it be continued and that the board allows us to amend the application, but that it be re-advertised to include that additional relief. So that being said, I'm happy to make the argument on variances at the next meeting, but I'll remind the board at this meeting that we had to meet that hurdle, not only for the dimensional variances, but for the use variances. We went through the entire, there's no change in the project on the ground, and, and we've been through that entire explication. I can make it again, the board can have that discussion again, but we, we did leave the last meeting because of the advertising issue with an understanding from this board, which I think the board was forthcoming in trying to give us, that the project itself, in the board's minds, was sort of at that point where it was ready to be voted on, and the board was willing to grant not only the use variances, but the one-dimensional variances, so...
Now, the, the site plan that's on, it's in the office for 2007. I, I personally don't think that the zoning line you established on your original site plans followed even that, that plan.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, so, but, I guess here tonight, I just wanted to, because I want to see this project go forward. However, my hurdle is on dealing with a new non-con, new non-conformity, which can either be satisfied by, we do grant a variance for that, or the building is, say, five feet shorter, whatever that 2% might be. Okay? I mean, that's, those are the two options here. And, and I would gather, just like to, I was just thinking, the fact it may be a benefit to the applicant that we have a little discussion regarding what the hardship might be or what it can be, so that as you do your planning for the next meeting, we get the next meeting and we're, and this project is completed, and not have anything left over.
I appreciate that, I really, I really do appreciate that, look, the more feed, I always tell my clients, you go to these meetings to listen, you don't go to talk, so, I'm listening.
So, right now, like, and I would like to have the board discuss this, because we're back in the open, open, open meeting here. The, had this originally been planned, I mean, from the beginning, and sized up, given the, 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 the R zoning and that, and that requirement for, for building coverage, that your engineer probably would have made, I'm just guessing, made the building size and compliance. So, that being said, the second thing here is if we're going to, if there's a hardship situation as to why, given shape, topography, everything else and whatever, that there's a variance argument to be made, I would like to discuss it here tonight, so that, at least for myself, because at, at the moment, I'm not quite sure how I get there. I'm not quite sure how I get there to approve a, a variance for a new noncom, a new nonconformity, and I want to learn if I, if it's a possibility, and if you feel the fact that overall the board is in that direction, at least you can go out of this meeting, make decisions as how are you gonna size a building, or how are you gonna present the case? That's all I'd like to be able to do. I'd just kind of load you up with all the information you've got, and at least the feelings from these four board, board members and the town council, so that at the next meeting, we wrap this up.
Well, Mr. Chairman, look, I'm listening, you know, and I, and I, and I'm listening loud and clear to what you're saying, and I think I hear what you're saying. You know, we've already reduced the size of this building and eliminated a building, you know, to address these numbers. These numbers were a complete surprise to us, you know, that map is buried somewhere in the surveyor's office, you know, it's not publicly available, at least it wasn't. Look, for us to demonstrate the hardship component of reducing this building by 2.6 percent of site coverage is difficult for us to do, but as we presented the last meeting, that the size of the building dictates the, the financial viability of the project.
Right.
Now, can I come in with a set of studies that show you that if this building is X number score versus Y? I, I'm not sure I can quantify them, Mr. Chairman. All I can say by way of general comment is, you know, and again, you know, I vented it, you guys, probably in a way that I haven't vented it as a zoning board in 30 years last time, about the death of a thousand cuts. I mean, we're sitting here because somebody walked into this, and dropped a plant at somebody's desk, and, and did this to us, you know, did this to us, and as I stand out in that hallway, I can see, I can see the incorrect zoning map on the wall and on the table, still, you know, they're there. And so, you know, we can certainly, to address the chair's concern, we can, we can cut some more off this project, we can go back to our engineer, we can have the plan redone. I'm just telling you in all earnestness, and in as much sincerity as I can muster, right now, that, you know, to, to demonstrate to you, to your satisfaction, and maybe other members' satisfaction, cutting another 2.6 percent of this building out, yeah, it's gonna hurt David, because he's gonna have less space to run to the public, but will, will we meet the hardship standard? I don't know.
But that's, and I just wanted myself-
Yeah.
Better understand the hardship, you know, what our, what our latitude is.
Understood.
On a hardship, okay? So, that's, that's the key thing. Now, regarding the plans on the, on the zoning office wall, you know, in my opinion, your, your site plan doesn't reflect that plan either, and that plan did have on there that the center line, the zoning center line was from Center Street. So, it was, it was indicated in there. I do think it's a slightly shaded difference in the 72 zoning, zoning map, but I do, I, again, and I'm-
Well, we left it in this group.
I believe the town engineer also agreed in that meeting that you guys had last week, that the, from the reports that I have, that the, your, your line was still lower than that, that zoning line.
Chairman, I'd just like anybody to walk up to that plan and show me where that line is.
Sure, I understand.
You know, you have an opinion, look, I have, I have a, I have a registered professional land surveyor who looked at your online map and drew a line based on that map.
Sure.
So, I, I spent some time with that map. I, so, to say that we bear some responsibility, yeah.
I'm not trying to argue the map situation, I apologize, I'm not trying to go down that rabbit hole. I'm just trying to say the fact that my concern, for me, my point of view at the moment, is, is how do I get myself-
Understood.
-to approve a new nonconformity?
Right.
And, and what are the valid reasons for doing that? And, and I just, I kind of wanted to have that discussion, and have you leave tonight knowing the, you know, not just mine, because I'm only one vote out of, hopefully next time, five, okay? All right? And I, and I just want you to get the benefit of the, the board members here and the town council as to how we arrive, and if there's a, if, if I have a pathway of approving a variance for a new nonconform, establishing a new nonconformity, you know, I, I am, I'm in favor of, of doing that, but, but I want to, I want to look at it and say, yeah, I can support that.
Understood.
And right now, I'm not there yet, and I'm, I'm hoping to be educated as to why I can't support that. But that's my viewpoint. John?
I do-
Oh, good day, go ahead.
Do you want to continue? I mean, at the end of the day, this is your-
No, no, I think, look, look, I, I, look, I, I think that-
We're gonna continue the meeting.
No, no, I understand. I, I think, and I hope I can agree with, with counsel and with the board, that the board has the authority to grant a variance, a dimensional variance, if we meet the standard for the grant of a variance.
Right, and that's the standard one that we need.
Right, so I, I understand that the board has the authority to grant the variance if we meet the standard. We've already come in and argued for a use variance, right, and we've argued for a, a, another dimensional variance, because the board took the position that the site covered required a variance, and the board, to a person, felt that we had met the requirements for the grant of both the dimensional variance and the use variance. I think it would be hard for the board to say, you know, look, okay, we like the project, you're fine, you've modified it, you've put the screening in, you've gotten rid of the building, but we don't think we can give you the building coverage variance, even though we're giving you the site coverage. I, I understand, you could make that factual determination. If you as a board believe that we have met the standard for the site coverage and the use, but not the building coverage, then you can take that vote and you can deny the third variance. I don't think that my presentation as to why we're entitled to the variance for the building coverage in addition to the site coverage and the, and the use is, is in any way going to be different in terms of my presentation.
Okay.
If, if that's helpful to the members, so.
John?
One question on the filing deadline. Have we passed it already for next meeting?
I believe it's tomorrow.
No, the sheet I had was the 21st.
Oh, yeah, maybe it was, it was last week.
All right, now, just real quick here, and I'm glad I came up with that. When, when I was first asked by Rachel, the question of whether or not, what I felt about, and maybe Amy, you can jump in here, the current, the current, the current advertising thing here indicates the fact that, hold on a second, let me find it. And also, they requested for, hold on a second. We've asked in this thing here, or in the turnabout, dimensional variance from 325 attachment, three-table, three-height bulk regulations. I think it's overall, in my opinion, and Amy, you, you, I want to, you confirm here, or you get your discussion. I'm not totally sure that, that re-advertising is gonna make a butters get a better handle as to what's going on with this project. We've already indicated that we're gonna be meeting regarding dimensional variances. And I personally, you know, and I told them wrong, I realize it does go on and do a specifically mentioned site coverage, but it, the current advertising thing brings out that we're gonna be viewing dimensional variances, you know, the dimensional changes here. So, you know, I, I could be, I'm somewhat satisfied the fact that we've, we've covered the idea of the, of the, of the building coverage.
I'm not sure I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I think, I'm not sure I agree with you. Look, I, look, we've gone down a tough road here. I would hate to see us get seven-eighths of the way there, and then all of a sudden have an issue with the, with the advertising, where we're coming in asking for a building coverage variance, which we haven't asked for. I don't believe, to address the members' question, I don't believe we need to reapply.
Well, that's what-
But I, and we've already filed the plans. I believe that we need to ask the board to, to vote to allow us to amend the application, and then I think a new advertisement needs to go out for the next meeting, which identifies the additional relief. I don't think we need to submit a new application. I can tell you, just by way of information, that the planning department has requested that we submit a new narrative, because in the planning arena, what's happening because of your counsel's advice, which I was very thankful for, we don't need a, a multifamily dwelling special permit from the planning board, because if we get a use variance, then there's really no mechanism for them to grant a multifamily special permit in that district. So, the planning department has asked that we redo our memorandum, because the numbers change, and the relief that we're asking for changes. So, we're happy to revise the memorandum and submit copies to you for review well in advance of the hearing, but I, I don't think that we need to reapply, and, and I'm, I'm happy to hear, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, it's your meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Well, no, no, go ahead, no.
No, no, I, I, I'm not trying to direct a meeting.
I don't think you need to reapply either.
I, I don't think you need to reapply, I was just making sure that it could be re-advertised in time.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I still have time to submit the legal ad.
So, I would appreciate, I would appreciate having that relief advertised, just because I-
Cover your bases, I understand.
There's been some pot stirring behind the scenes that I, I'm aware of, but, you know, I, I don't want to see additional pot stirring, and it's not with the board and it's not with staff, it's just, there's been some activity that I've become aware of that is influencing this application, and I, I don't want to leave an exposure there that, that we have to worry about.
Okay, all right. I, I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
I just, I'll just point out the fact that I thought in a way it was already covered.
I love that, yeah, thank you.
Because it's, in my opinion, the people, the butters, there's no new information about this project that re-advertising is really gonna give them, but if you want to get, make sure we've got everything T's crossed, I started, then I can appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we can certainly, I can make a motion that we go forward with a continuance, but I-
I'd still love to hear from the members, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to, again, I'd like to have the members discuss, you know, what the hardship, we look at, what the hardship we see evident here, we've been through this case quite a bit, that would allow us the, the pathway to, to consider a hardship for a new nonconformity, and, and I don't believe the hardship can be based upon the fact that their, the wrong, the, the different zoning map was referred to. I don't believe that considers a hardship.
I agree with the chair.
So, if we could just have that discussion, and also like to get viewpoint from town council as well, and as well as the, you know, the zoning administrator.
So, I mean, from my perspective, I, I will admit that when I saw the new line, it gave me pause from our previous discussions, because it essentially moves the entire new building into the RR zone. But, you know, taking time to think of it, it's still an issue of a split lot, right? It's still, you know, challenges either way that you go, and I think in regards to Brian's concerns about the site coverage or the building coverage, I kind of took it step by step, and my thinking is that we were all pretty much on board already with the mixed use.
Correct.
And I think it's somewhat unrealistic to think you could have put something mixed use there and stayed within the 15%, right? It's kind of, they follow onto each other. So, at this point, barring new information rearing its head, I, I still think I'm where I was last month, and I can get my head around it.
Thank you.
Same.
So, well, you're feeling the fact that, first of all, I know in the past, and we had you do one change, because we, based upon how we handled cases in the past, and it's, it's not on any particular page in the zoning documents, that we wanted a reasonable portion of the building to begin in the commercial, you know, no, no building be solely in the residential zone, that it had to begin in the commercial district or the IL district, and then be completed in the residential district. Again, as I go down to that lot and I look at it, I, I, I believe the fact that the, where there's no zoning regulations for split lot zones in this, this town, that lack of guidance does create a hardship, and I'm fine with the multi-use on the site, and I'm fine with this, you know, looking at that location, where all the business around there of having the storage building and the multifamily on that site is, is fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay? You know, that's, that's all right, that's my opinion there. Are you, are we saying the fact that, and you raise a point here, that since it's unrealistic to expect a mixed-use environment to be at 15%, is that what you feel is a hardship?
Well, I think 15% is the RR, right?
Right.
Which would be a residential structure. Now, we've already kind of taken the, the leap of saying mixed use could be appropriate here, you know, are you still gonna say, but then it has to comply with a residential, you know, dimensional requirement? I, you know, I would, you know, I think you'd have a hard time building any type of mixed-use facility here, staying within the 15% and having it be vital, you know, so. The fact that it's 17% is actually, you know, lot coverage is largely because of the parking and the drive-around and everything, but it's still a relatively small building compared to the lot size.
All right, does that, does that come under the umbrella of shape, lot, so forth, and soil, et cetera, that's in the code for variance?
The split lot does.
Yeah, to me, the split lot is what makes the shape.
Okay, so, based upon it being a split lot, and the hardship is the fact in a split lot, mixed use, mixed use development, the hardship is expecting the applicant to be able to do the project within 15%.
I'm not sure that the mixed-use development actually contributes to it, it's the split lot, so, no matter what, you know, because there is a, a commercial industrial component of the lot, to push that into residential, you're gonna run into problems, because the residential is so much smaller, the, the site coverage or the building coverage is only 15%.
Yeah, and other parts of town, we just had another case where the, on a CV district, the, for residential, it's allowing 25%.
Right. So, so I think that, I think that, you know, the mixed-use issue is different, that's a use variance that, you know, I think you guys are comfortable with, because again, it's a split lot, but here, for the building coverage, it's, I think the reason is because it's a split lot, it's the shape of the lot.
And that's what we can hang our hat on for, for a hardship?
If you guys want to, yes.
Okay.
In my opinion, yes.
Al?
I have nothing to add to this, I mean, uh-
Oh, go for it, Al, come on.
Between.
How's the horse doing this week?
I just don't want to belabor this. You know, I think John's done a nice job, I think Amy's done a fine job on it, and I'm not gonna add anymore, so I'll wait till next week, next month, I should say.
And I would ask, I mean, it's up to your counsel as to how you're supposed to handle it, but I would ask the board to vote to allow us to amend the application for, to, to request a use, I'm sorry, dimensional variance to exceed, for a new nonconformity for building coverage. You know, the board, I would ask the board to take that vote tonight, so then all we really need to do then is just review the advertisement. Rachel's been wonderful about letting us take a look at it.
All right, well, let's, let's knock that off. It, I'd just like to make, make a motion to the fact that the applicant be allowed to amend his application and, and, and site plans to present the meeting, present his application again at the, at the next meeting in, in, in April. That's my motion. Do I have a second on it?
Second.
All right, and also like, like, excuse me, amend that, doing so forth, there's no additional fees and so forth, okay? Thank you for guiding that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, all right, in regard agreement to can, to continue.
Just showing the turn, the agreement to continue. Need to close the public session, that was reopened?
It, that would be, would be helpful, okay? You haven't done that yet. So, the open session is, before closing, is there anyone here that wants to discuss this further, from the, from the public? Okay, hearing none, and any last comments from the applicant to our board? All right, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. So, move by Al. Okay, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Yes, sir.
I think, I'm not sure the board has voted to continue the matter yet.
Oh, well, I did not.
I think I just stepped ahead of your counsel on that one, so, we're requesting a continuance on the 24th, please.
Uh, gentlemen, I, I signed a continuation agreement, and so I'd like to vote that, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the, the meeting until, until the April session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by John? Second by John. Okay, all those in favor? Alright?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, Amy.
Continue.
Thank you.
Welcome. It's nicer than the meeting we had with him last week. Said that was nicer than the meeting we had last week.
Yeah.
Scream.
I know.
Yeah, it, uh, we're, we're welcome to the... Okay. Amy, thank you for being here.
No problem.
I guess on, where I don't, uh, actually, well, the meeting's over, so I can discuss it, but, um... Okay.
Do you live on Cape?
I, no. I, I live in Marshfield, so it's not far at all. It's an easy, it's a very easy drive, you know? Yeah, no, it's not bad. I was in, I was in Carver, um, before this, and I thought that it would take me like, you know, forty-four down to three, and it didn't. It, it took me all the way through Carver, Wareham. But it's still, it didn't take, I was here. Um, Rachel told me to come at seven. I was here earlier, so, I mean, it didn't take too long. Not, it's not bad. I'd rather come here than go like, um, tomorrow night I have to be in Ipswich, so I have to go right through Boston, and then, and then coming home, I always think that it's going an easy drive, and then they're doing roadwork.
Yeah.
Like at eleven o'clock at night.
You're not going to Salisbury anytime soon, huh?
Oh, I, I might have to.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, we represent them too. Yeah.
I was just up there this weekend. I was getting my Salem shirt on.
Oh, no.
Rest one.
There's no quick way to get a new one.
No. No, it's, uh...
Yeah, I just...
Some of those towns, it's, uh, it's tough.
It's hard to use, really.
Twenty-five, thirty minutes. That's what kills...
I was surprised. It's the same thing, from Salem to, back into Boston, and it broke me a few one-way.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Seems like this is the fastest way.
And then, and then you go through, like, once you get into, like, sog it, it, there's all kinds of rotaries, and I never know where I'm going, and... Yeah, no, it's, uh... I spend my life in my car. And then, this, this is, I shouldn't even tell you, I shouldn't even tell you what I did, so my, my son wrecked my car, of course. It's, he's fine, it's fine. But, so I have to use my husband's car now 'cause my car's being fixed, so I have to use my husband's car. So, I get in the car to go to Carver, and my, the car won't start. And I'm like, oh my God, what's going on? I'm like, trying to, like, I'm thinking, I'm like, looking at all these things, and I call him up, and he's like, what do you mean? He's like, I used it this morning, and I'm like, I'm like, Jay, it won't start, it won't start. And I look down, I have my keys.
Jesus. And they had done that.
He was like, that's a blonde moment. I'm like, yes, that was a blonde moment. Completely panicking. I had the wrong set of keys. I'm not gonna go far with those, so...
Okay, Amy.
Alright, so I, I'll see you on the twenty-fourth unless I hear from you, if I am, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Alright, and then I can, I'll help draft the decision too.
Thank you for being here.
Alright, I'll see you, Al.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
See ya.
See ya.
See you soon.
I, somewhere in this junk, I misplaced my agenda, so what's the next item?
Approval of minutes.
Yeah, approval. Approval of minutes.
The minutes, yes.
Okay, I, I didn't have any changes.
No.
No, I didn't either. What happened? It wasn't beeped, you said, or something?
No audio recorded.
Oh.
Yeah. Had to do it from memory.
But it is being recorded tonight, so, uh, then we solve the problem. Alright, so, um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes. Can I ask me?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alright, oh, there it is. Okay. New business. What's on the new business on? Okay, so, it, personally, there, you know, there's probably, there's not immediate need to update the zoning map. I mean, you know, but, but it, uh, the zoning regulations refer to the seventy-two map, which is now hanging up. Um, the, uh, the current map on this particular issue, uh, does say, sir, the zoning line is from the center line of the, of Center Street. So, um, that's, you know, we're not going to reach agreement with various parties on, on all that interpretation, so I don't know how, I don't think it's that far off, but in order to, uh, at some point, when it might be deemed necessary to change the map, is, it really only affects lots that come to us that are in split lot situations. We've had discussions with Amy, I mean, with, uh, with Rachel, had discussions that, you know, and it's her idea that anytime anybody comes in front of us in the future that has a split lot scenario, their site plan immediately is gonna go to town engineering, the engineering consultant, to verify the zoning line.
Mm-hmm.
Just gonna do that automatically in any, any split lot scenario, so that there's no issues. Any issue would be identified prior to the meeting. Okay, going forward. So, and, uh, you know, so there's, we're still gonna be, up hanging is gonna be the two thousand and seven zoning map, but it will get, any application regarding that would get, uh, will get reviewed regarding the zoning lines. Any, alright, 'cause it, it has to then go probably through hundreds of hours of review.
Right, well, I mean...
Ends up going to town meeting, ends up, but right now, it's, it's, we, we get other priorities on, on, on zoning to change.
Yeah.
Update, not the map.
But that review will happen well before we even see it, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's gonna be part of either the building commissioner rejecting or accepting what's...
When they send their application in, and has the, the site map on it, as soon as we get the site map, and, uh, uh, and we'll, you know, obviously, Rachel will motivate people, listen, it's split zone lot, it's to your benefit to get the site plan to us not at the last minute, so it can be reviewed by town engineering.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, uh, if we don't have it reviewed by town engineering before the meeting, meaning, from what I'm saying, the meeting gets continued.
Yeah.
Okay? So, it's gonna be, when we have that scenario, she'll inform the applicant, you're in a split zone, split lots scenario. This is the procedure. Town engineer has to review it, so you've gotta give us an extra week and a half, two weeks, time-wise, to get, to get that accomplished. I mean, whatever period of time that we think we need.
Yeah. In theory, it's possible they could always get reviewed before, before the hearing, but...
So, is, is the reason there's a different map online is because that's a digitized map?
The interactive map?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that one's different, and you can't rely on it for any zoning districts because it's an overlay and it's, it's done by GIS, but it wasn't done by land surveyors.
Yes, that's what, is there, if someone goes into that?
Yeah.
Is there a note, a prominent note that says this is for information purposes, but should, you know...
Let me look right now. I believe there's a disclaimer at the beginning of it.
I think that would, well, there's not, there should be one.
Probably needs to, probably disclaimer needs to be expanded that all zoning lines need be confirmed based upon the nineteen seventy-two map.
Yeah, yeah, that this is for, you know, information.
Yeah, there is a, there is a disclaimer when you open it.
Yeah.
What's it say?
Does it refer to the seventy-two map?
No, it just says it can't be relied upon for zoning purposes.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I would just add, to me, the full answer to that question was, well, then what can we rely on? I would just expand that sentence a little to say that the nineteen seventy-two map is the definitive map.
Mm-hmm.
It is available in town hall or whatever.
I can look into seeing if we can add that language. I don't, yeah.
Okay, um, so we all set with new business?
I think so.
Alright. Old business. Amy, I'd like, uh, Amy, Rachel, I, I've got the email, I passed on the email that came from Jack regarding buil- building structure height.
Okay.
And, uh, probably like to have that forwarded to all the members of the board to the house.
Okay, yeah, I don't have this. I'll just scan it in and I can email it to everybody.
Yeah, actually, yeah, okay. So, so basically, uh, in earlier this evening, you saw where I updated the attorney that was here, Attorney Kroll, 'cause he had a lot of cases regarding uh, this, uh, this definition of how building heights establish. So, it is, it is based upon land, okay, and it's based upon the average height of the land. Um, and, uh... But, but what's interesting here is, is that, which would apply to any, anybody that's doing anything here. Uh, first of all, if it's, I'm, if I'm reading this right, if it's vacant land, the height is based upon, you know, the average height or the average base for the property, okay? But if it's an existing structure, it's based upon the average grades based upon the structure as it currently sits. So, you know, if it's...
No, the hi- the height of the structure is, it's based upon the average grade of the lot, so you take the highest point.
Good, now, for developed lots, pre-existing grades shall be determined by calculating the average of the existing high and low grade points at the base of the existing building.
It's not the whole lot, it's the building.
It's the building. See, so, an existing building such as, uh, a previous case we had last month.
Mm, mm-hmm.
You're, you're taking, there's the height, whatever that's got on the average grade of that existing foundation, or, I mean, I'm sorry, where the land is, or that, where that sucker sits, that building sits, the average grade of that current built structure is, is the starting point, is zero grade.
That last little note, though, I mean, it does make a huge difference, but as so long as the highest point is at least eight inches below the top of the foundation. So, if you have a house that's only this much above, they gotta calculate a little below. It's gotta be a minimum of eight inches.
Yes.
See, I'd seen this before. The reason I brought it up last week was more, and it kinda, you know, now that Rachel's on board, not to get too much into the process stuff, is, is my concern was that we get applications where the person fills out their application from top of foundation. We had one a couple months ago that was twenty-nine and a half feet from the top of foundation, and the, the lot sloped like this, right? And I don't think we're here to, to, you know, argue the fact set, right? Sort of the same thing with the zoning, right? It is, we get a, we're doing the judgment stuff, right? Um, but I'm just wondering if there's a process that, within the town, when someone submits an application that says, A, either if they say top of foundation, that you get back and say that's not the proper measurement, or someone that actually takes the application and takes the drawings and says, that's, that's actually not what the height of your building is, you know, they, you, you filled it out erroneously. But I think there's been, I went back and I looked through like the last year, there's been at least six that the, what they put on their zoning compliance table was the top of foundation. And some of them were like twenty-nine and a half feet. So, and I'm, and again, if I was in, probably in, in the same shoes, I would be putting the most favorable to me, but I'm just worried that someone comes back later, once it's built, and they see this huge thing, and they go back and they say, wait a minute, that, that building's two feet too tall, based on zoning, but you guys approved it.
Right, that's right. So, going forward.
Yeah.
It's gonna be notation that, that's gonna be on the summary that Rachel does.
Mm-hmm.
And, and she'll, she'll alert, she'll alert the applicant that, sorry...
As I'm saying this, to me, it should just be pushed back to the applicant and saying this.
So, like, tonight, I gave, 'cause we see bill quite frequently.
Yeah.
And, um, as a matter of fact, Rachel, it, I think it's within, for, for proper information to, you know, um, the typical attorneys that's, that come before us, or, you know, Attorney Kroll, Attorney Singer, a couple of ones who are frequently. It, it, when, uh, right, either, when they take out an application, they should get a copy of this, just to remind them how building heights established, because as, as John's pointing out, there may be, an education needs to be done here with the, um, these, these applicants before they go through, um, a major effort of preparing site plans and, and the final of the project.
Most of the time, once they come to us, all of their plans are already finalized. They don't usually come to the building department or the zoning board until their plans are finalized.
Perhaps, but I think perhaps sometimes they're, they're seeing their attorneys.
Yeah.
Prior to that, so I think on the, I just wanna bring that out before we, we, we approve having Rachel do this, that, uh, the, the attorneys that frequently come to this, present cases here, uh, you know, get a, probably a, probably need to pull this into a better-looking copy, but get a copy of the regulations. Uh, now, that going forward, the zoning board is going to be considering building height being based upon, you know, this regulation. And we gotta verify with Jack that that's proper regulations.
Well, that, that's kinda where I was going, is, to me, it's not just the zoning board, it's the building compliance should be doing the same thing.
Who?
It's like, you know, it shouldn't, 'cause, you know, my argument, what if there was something that didn't?
It's also building, the building problem as well.
What if someone was totally within, yeah, you know, within the, didn't need a variance or didn't need a special permit?
Right.
But actually had, had submitted something top of foundation and it got approved, and it was on a sloping lot, and then somebody else complains later and says, wait a minute, why, why the building?
We've gone through that years past.
I mean, typically, the building commissioner, building inspector are, you know, reviewing that information before they approve the building permit.
But I don't necessarily think, is, is Jack, or in the past, if that's being reviewed, we've never had a case where the building commissioner, past or present, has brought to our attention that they used the wrong, um...
I'm, I'm looking more of a, just from a standpoint of like that zoning compliance table.
Right.
There was one last month.
Right.
It's not right, right? What was submitted and what became the official document was measured from top of foundation.
Correct.
Which is not the proper measure. So, that, that, I'm just trying to get back saying, you know, my concept of the board is that we're dealing with, you know, do you grant a variance, do you, you know? We're not supposed to be validating whether it's factually correct, right? It should be factually correct before it comes to the board, right?
Exactly, I totally agree with you.
There's other issues for the board, but it needs to be factually correct.
I'm not gonna walk around with a, with a tape measure and measuring foundation.
Right, yeah, yeah. Particularly the ones that they call, I mean, as, as you guys probably remember, it's, there's a bunch of buildings that we've gotten, mainly the, the demolish and reconstruct that coincidentally are all twenty-nine and a half feet.
You know what? That problem actually did take place, goes back a number of years ago now. It was a brand-new development, it's off of Depot. And, uh, at the time, that was, the questions came up because there was a property owner who bought an additional lot after the, uh, after the other properties had been in there for three, four, five years. Question came up with regard to the height of the property. And in that case, there was some discussion, if I remember, it had a walkout basement, and that foundation on the walkout basement was somewhere in the art of a boat, ten to fifteen feet. And the neighbor across the street was complaining because the chimney on the new home was higher than his home, which was on a, somewhat elevated. But that started a problem in two or three other homes too down there, because some of the other neighbors went, whoa, 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 wait a minute. Our properties were put in by developers, and how we handle this, at that particular time, tell you exactly what happened. It was allowed to go through, because we weren't gonna get involved with a developer who already had maybe ten and fifty homes in this neighborhood. And the additional home coming in with the new person having a home developed was gonna, no.
Well, certainly, given the rest of the neighborhood, you'd seek a variance.
Yeah, like I said, I, I just, and I could go back and list the cases, that would, but, but I strongly suspect that, you know, we granted dimensional variances or special permits based on lot line issues when several of the buildings in the last year also had a height issue. And it probably should've been included in the special permit as well, but because they filled it out from top of foundation... they filled it out from top of foundation, it didn't show that they needed a...
My point is the fact that it's never been raised up by current or past building commissioners, and I think basically, Rachel, I, I, I think that this situation has brought the attention of, uh, to the, uh, building department, uh, zoning department as well as, I mean, I'm sorry, to the board, the, uh, planning board, and the director of the planning board, and you gotta start getting the word out there that these are the regulations for right.
Sad thing that's fallen away, unfortunately, I, getting up to forty years that I was in, I still am, I was on a call today consulting a project, actually, it's still on here in the bottom, it's people, back in the old days, when people did things manually, someone had to sign off that they did it, and that someone checked it, and this drawing here is the same guy, because of cat, and I still think that was the best way, because it would, you know, it would be the same thing, you got an application, well, that's what you said, I'm gonna go to the drawings and check all the numbers you put on your application and check it, but, you know, everything's done by computer these days, so people don't double check other people's work.
So anyways, tonight I informed Bill, and I think we, probably at some point here, need to get that out to all the, the standard lawyers that we, that represent applicants, and filter the process down to, to the planning board and planning director, that this is...
The building commissioner.
Building commissioner, and, yeah, he knows it, but the fact that we're gonna, at least on the, on our board, we're gonna start checking it, and we, we think that just raising this issue to the planning board is also, because they do site plan review.
They do site plan review, they don't, they don't typically review building height or...
They don't, and it never comes up, okay.
I think one of the things, you know, maybe it's in the application process, is that it just needs to be clear, there's actually an acronym for this measurement, right, I think, it's not T, TOF is always top of foundation, there's something else, is that, you know, just needs to be clear that that, that's what you fill in in this block, right, not top of foundation, you fill in, you know, building, you know.
Okay. Have we all done the conflict of interest?
I have not, it's not my first, but I think I...
When'd you say the due date?
It's a new one.
When'd you say the different, the due date was?
By the end of April.
I did mine back in January, but...
Pretty sure it's by the end of April.
Okay, so, let's, uh, if you guys could accomplish it by the next meeting, we appreciate it, you know, it's, uh...
I've been having too much fun, so it's time to do something like that.
You can do it really quickly.
It's, it's, I was done in forty-five minutes, I forget what, but, I would like it, I would like it accomplished, okay, um, and my bonus check is based upon...
You get a commission?
Yeah, my bonus check from the select on this is, is based upon, you know, that I have a hundred percent on this, the, uh... Well, that's about it, guys, it, um, I would, it's now eight twenty-four, um, I don't believe there's any, anything else that needs to be discussed, and I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.